The time is now 6:08 and we are going to begin our second meeting of the day. I'd like to call the meeting to order and if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, our students from Slade will lead us.
(Inaudible)
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 Thank you very much.
Mr. Kanata, would you please call the board?
(Inaudible)
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 Here. Thank you. We get to take a brief moment of meditation and keep in your thoughts the family of Elaine Rikia. Thank you. Now we will have our welcome by Slade Middle School. If you guys want to, anyone who's right there wants to go there.
(Inaudible)
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 You can talk, we're gonna move over this way so we can see them and not be...
Good evening everybody, I'm the Director of Slade Middle School. We have Mr. Bailey, Mr. Pena, or Mr. Spur. We'd like to welcome you to Slade Middle School for this event. I have a couple of tweets for you. Not only did you get a chance to sample our new program entries on this fishy and that weekend. (Applause) And to taste some of those, enough for everybody. You'll also get a chance to see some of our steam projects. For most part you get a chance to see our Slade Middle School rock band. (Inaudible) and our rock band group. So without any further ado, someone can share another thought with President Quipkirk, Mr. Walzick and the Slade Middle School Rock Band. (Applause)
(Inaudible) We play after school twice a week for about an hour. And I have the kids, I said, "What instrument do you want to play?" And they said, "I want to play bass." I said, "Ain't you a bass player?" Daddy came and he said, "I want to be a singer." I said, "Great, you're a singer." So everybody picked their instruments and worked on their craft and played at our first big gig. We played at the Winter Concert last year. We played a bunch of little shows. Now this is our next little show. We're working on getting something down with the Music Alliance downtown. See if we can get a Rock Band Day down there too. So any support where you think the rock band would be like a great idea, let us know. If you can help support us a little bit, we are glad to run any rock tune that you desire. So we picked this one out just because classic rock. And people were like, "That's really 60's." "That's okay, you'll get it." So this was "Ain't Too Proud to Beg" by The Temptations.
(Inaudible)
If you want to chime in, clap, do anything, let us get started first and then come in at the "Ain't Too Proud to Beg," okay? Okay. One, two, three, four, one, two.
Nice job, ladies and gentlemen, great job. For events like this that we continue to run on a daily basis, this was actually used way by the claw, by the tenses. It's like something different. And you waited for students and it's basically for us to still students first saying, "What do you guys want to do?" The game with the rock band, if they come every week on the overtime after school, Mr. Walzick, twice a week, and this is what we get. But one of these people always can hear at Slade, and I believe that's very important to us at Slade, our other fine arts programs that we want to hear at Slade as well as the sports program. We do believe between our fine arts program, our sports program, and our academics, you know, and now we added the steam component to this that our students are really getting that whole ball around and we don't end up developing a piece. So thank you and enjoy the night, but I do have a note for the piece. I just want to welcome Mr. Reyes back and the President of Slade Middle School. (Applause)
Yes. All right. We'd also like to welcome Alder Munrez and Alder Mazzato. Thank you again for coming out and supporting us. We now have public participation. I see one person signed up. Jan, I don't want to mess up your last name.
Pikehurst.
Pikehurst, okay. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jan Pikehurst, at 33 Andrews Street here in New Britain. I am the co-chair of the Arch area NRZ and I am here this evening because I understand under consent calendar is an item for a place escape for Northern School. We've been working with Ms. Boy, Ms. West, and other members along with Superintendent Sarah to get something for the children. These little people are, it's the only school actually in New Britain that has nothing. And what we have designed is small. It's nothing big because we have to be able to accommodate the small area. It's going to be on the Bassett Street side. It's been approved by the fire department and all to make sure that the children's safety is there. We've also looked into making sure that our handicapped children have some items as well. And I just hope everyone will find it in their heart to approve this because Northern School is in the heart of our NRZ and it's our anticipation that we'd like to do more with Northern School. We also have vans and we've been trying to work with Slade a bit, but of course, this school encompasses half the city. But we always welcome anyone to the Arch area NRZ. Actually, we're supposed to meet tonight, but it was important for us to be here. So Elaine Leckowitz, who's really the brainchild of this, who is right here, and Tony Minar, who was behind me as well, have come to also voice our support and I thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Anyone else who would like to address the board? And last but final time, anyone else who would like to address the board? Thank you for your service. Public participation is now closed. Superintendent, it is now time for you.
Okay, so I'm gonna do this in two parts. The first part, you have a printout, a hard copy printout, where I'm actually gonna go stand at the podium too and do a few slides tonight. And I just want you to, the highlights for me, it's a shout out for the week, is our ROTC making history, until you can take the time. I'm gonna read this one though, just because all of them are proud moments. They competed, amazing results in the final drill meet of four in the 2018-19 Southern New England World Season. Our cadets competed in six team events, placing first in five overall for the season, which is huge. That's huge. Cadets also remarkably earned 20 out of 40 individual medals. That was the best results in the history of our ROTC. So we have, and I'm hoping that we can do something for our ROTC in future months and bring them in, because that was amazing. Also, and I see Mr. Clerken in the audience, we had our side-by-side day with New Britain High School and the middle school students. Basically, the Triad Music Honor Society, they hosted the Side-by-Side Project, which is eighth grade music students. Our eighth graders had the opportunity to rehearse and perform with the choral band and orchestra students here at the high school, culminating in a full group performance of New Britain High School Alma Mater. They were able to ask questions and answers and it's really just a piece of the transition plan of making our kids feel comfortable if they're band students and want to come over to the high school for the next year. We had to cancel our internet safety for our parents because of the weather last week, but we did bring our fifth and sixth graders in and our seventh and eighth graders in to the auditorium at New Britain High School, where we had Scott Driscoll, a retired FBI agent. Not talk so much about safety of it, about being safe, being a responsible user, because we understand that kids are going to be using their devices, but just really kind of alerting them to some of the pitfalls that they might encounter and trying to just educate them on that. And fifth grade received it well, sixth, seventh, knew most of it already, I think, and eighth grade were receptive. So, but our seventh graders, typical to the age, probably knew more than, well, most of them know more than I do anyway, as far as that goes. Downs Construction, this was amazing and because it's their 85th birthday, they wanted to give back to the community, so with our partnership with the Ungrace Project, they are, we have identified a teacher in seven sites or eight sites that is the unsung hero that does things above and beyond. And so you feel a little bit like Ed McMahon going into the building, but Downs comes in. Yeah, the big check, it was a big check. But the teachers are awarded, and they have no idea, there's a presentation in the auditorium, and they're awarded $1,000 to spend on the school or on their classroom. And that's through the generous donation of Downs. And we've had two so far, they were wonderful. We did one at Transition Center and we also did one at Gaffney Elementary last week. So, and it'll be ongoing throughout the year. And I'm not gonna read the rest unless you want me to just make mention of it here, just different workshops that our high school students, our academies are getting involved with. Also, just before the Christmas, Ev Lopez, who is one of the administrative assistants over at Dela Retto, with another colleague, they create shoeboxes each year for the Prudence Crandall Center. And so all I did was text one of our admins and actually Jay Merriman and all of our students at Brookside got together, they went shopping, and they made, I want to say 75 shoeboxes, and they donated them to Ev so Ev could bring them to the Prudence Crandall Center. So, and our Brookside kids were unsung heroes over the Christmas holidays, so that was really nice. And then also just at the high school, our STEM class is among the nation's 250 state finalists. I'm in a competition. It's called the Tomorrow Contest, and you can read on that. So there's a lot of good things happening. Also, the last two pages, not to read now, but it's just feedback. And this kind of feeds into the presentation. I'm gonna ask Mike, do you want to come on up and we'll do it together? I have Mike with me because I talk a lot and I'm trying to cut down on the words. (Inaudible) Yeah. So the reason I'm standing up here really is because you're gonna see the next two presentations tonight, and I wanted to give you a visual or an overview of where we are in the redesign and how the next steps that we are bringing in fit into the overall redesign. And I'm supposed to use this, and what did I press? Not bad.
The right turn.
I'm going to start with the first and... Okay, thank you. And I do want to just review the vision and the mission statement for our district, and I think it's important that we keep this in mind. Pursuing excellence, it's a one-line vision. We pursue excellence for every student in New Britain. Everyone's personal best, everyone's journey is a different journey. Our mission and how we accomplish that is in partnership with family and community. We work to provide the best personalized and comprehensive whole child education so our students will be prepared for and positively contribute to a profoundly different future. And for some of you who weren't on the board at the time, we had a lot of discussions at the board around that last statement, a profoundly different future. And some of them took it to be negative, some took it to be positive. The intention behind it is, we don't know the jobs that are going to exist 25 years from now. With technology, with different advancements, there are gonna be many different jobs that we're, we don't even know what we're training our kids for. Well, what are those enduring traits that will transcend really any job? And a lot of that goes to those life and learning competencies around self-management, self-awareness, social efficacy, and ultimately academic efficacy as well. So we know that working on those types of skills with relevant engaging material is going to prepare our students for a profoundly different future. Our theory of action is if we dedicate consistent resources, and I mean time, talent, and dollars to improve adult practice aligned to the profile of a New Britain High School graduate and provide equity and access to hands-on learning for all students, student engagement and outcomes will improve. And through NBU professional learning and the enrichment electives that we're offering now, we believe that those are the action steps to work on the mission. Someone might take this one, and this is just one piece of feedback, you do have feedback in your packet as well.
So we do go in, as I think we told you last year, that this was gonna be a process and that we have to learn as we go and kind of balance to give things time to work, yet recognize when we need to adjust. So we just wanted to point out a few, we have been making adjustments based on the feedback we're getting both from the teachers at NBU and the administrators. Here are some examples of those adjustments. At the elementary level, we've now held some of the NBU sessions in the buildings twice a month, twice a month at the NBU site. Middle school teachers, one of the things they were very concerned about that they lost in their schedules was collaborative meeting time. So we built collaborative meeting time into the NBU schedule every two weeks. Flexible time where they are required to meet and talk about an action that they want to take as a group, what they have the freedom to choose the need of that meeting, what they, what they want to talk about and plan for in their collaborative planning time. We've heard from both middle and high staff that they need, or want time to work with their content area as well as their interdisciplinary teams, so we built content area collaboration time into our NBU schedule. And we've also, based on feedback, added weekly additional planning time for esteemed teachers because of the number of different sections that they teach, grades that they teach depending on the level.
And to Mike's point, again, whenever something new, when you start something new, and especially with the engineering design process, it's take it out for a test drive, get the feedback. And so one of the ways that we get feedback is every week at NBU, we have a survey and we also have stickies and we have an ongoing list of feedback that we get from them. These changes were made because of the feedback. And some of the feedback, we can do some short-term midterm adjustments, some of the feedback is gonna be for long range. The survey, is it an online survey, a form survey? It's the same survey every time? It is, the questions graduate, they change over time. The initial questions were like, "Do you know who your esteemed teachers are?" And that was the first week. "Do you know?" and just different questions. And as we progress through it, the questions change to meet what they're doing then. Some of the teachers said they didn't feel comfortable because they weren't anonymous when they said that. So then we moved to an online sticky kind of format where they could just plug up a sticky note at the end. Just a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, the teacher said, "We like the other way better." Doesn't matter how I get the feedback. It can be through, it can be just through an email. But I will say that, and Mrs. Bolt, he can speak to that, and Mr. Ford, ask him, Dr. Sanders and others, teachers are pretty forthcoming with feedback.
(Inaudible) So the collaborative time, the special ed teachers get time with other special ed teachers or they just will?
So the special ed teachers, and I'll speak to the middle, and one more middle, but I also attend some of the high school ones, the special ed teachers attend with their teams. And when they're, during content area time, the special ed teachers do certain activities during the day, the content area teachers that are in those groups work together, and other times the teams work together. So the special ed teachers do have opportunities to work with the other special ed teachers just as men in their social studies and science.
And then I also want to add, we do have a professional learning day in November with the election day, and then we also have one in March. And some of the feedback we get from the electives and from special education, really more electives I could say, the music, the art, and I just talked to Slade staff, I think two weeks ago, was, "We need time for this too and there's no time built in." We have built in four sessions during the year where the elective specials come with their colleagues, so four times, and during that time, students will get plus enrichment on that day while the elective teachers come out and mute their content. Is it enough? Probably not. And so that's one of those tweaks that we have to work on, how we can be a little more equitable with the time that we're giving. So for us, again, this is the long-term potential adjustments. You want to take that?
Yeah. So as the previous slide indicated, some changes can be made quickly, we're kind of on the fly. We recognize that we need to explore more efficient scheduling options for New Britain High School and that while the team and the NBU is non-negotiable, the team at New Britain High School is exploring different scheduling options to more efficiently use their staff and provide opportunities to create a tighter schedule within the NBU structure. We also are looking at the middle school, the middle school schedule and seeing if we can build in collaborative time during off-weekly, they don't have NBU, elementary schedule, again, looking to maximize the efficiency of the esteemed teachers during non-NBU time and how to adjust the schedule to do that. And art music potentially considered going back to rotating schedule so they get art music.
Twice per six-day cycle.
So with your six-day cycle.
And so what I guess is, as soon as the school year starts, we start getting feedback and we start working on what do the adjustments look like for next year. We are well underway with the elementary schedule. We just had two sessions, focus groups sessions, and providing them with our best draft. Look at this, give us feedback, punch it, do whatever you need to do with it. And that's for elementary. We're currently working on middle and I know the high schools.
We're also underway. The middle school's gotta be less of a tweak. The middle school schedule seems to fit best in terms of the feedback we're getting, but if we can make a tweak to provide some collaborative time on those non-NBU weeks, we're gonna look at if that's possible to do with our existing staff.
And I think the biggest piece of, or the majority of feedback as far as NBU, not NBU so much, but the plus there are the elective specials for our students, is it's too long in between, nine days is too long in between. And again, you know, the schedule we had before wasn't perfect either, there were shortfalls. No schedule is gonna, and this is, I just spoke to a small group of administrators, a small group of teachers. We're gonna take everyone's feedback and everyone's gonna get a little something and we're gonna move with it. But again, to Mike's point, non-negotiables are carving out that time for adult learning to happen, that has to happen, and to offer enrichment for students and engaging things with hands-on.
(Inaudible)
Right. And teams at the high school. Questions on that before I move on? So some of the proposed next steps, again, we're gonna continue with NBU professional learning and then enrichment elective. You're gonna be hearing shortly from some of our preschool stakeholders, we have Terry Turk out here and a couple more, to talk about consolidating our preschool classrooms to two sites. One would be the Roosevelt Early Learning Center and the other would be Gaffney. The second, and we are in a strategy group, or we're a working group, every Friday we meet, is to create a more comprehensive continuum of services to better meet the needs of all of our New Britain students. And a proposal that we are working on and not yet ready to bring to you yet is around establishing small integrated classrooms for K-8 and the small integrated teams for New Britain High School. It will be a regular education classroom with more structure in it to help with some of our students who struggle with regulation, not necessarily special education student or student identified, but for those students who require a higher level or a higher level of support from teachers. And you will be hearing more about that. And the reason I did this tonight was, I knew that Terry was gonna come up and she was gonna talk on preschool, but I need you to see the big picture of the next phase. For us, when I had all the focus groups back in November, December, January last year, behavior came up as a major concern for teachers. It's a big concern. And again, so we look at two things, core instruction, we have to change core instruction. How best to do that other than adult learning on a regular basis? But the reality is, there will be those students who struggle to thrive in, at the core. And there is going to be a need for more in terms of our continuum of services that we provide. If we go back to our mission of pursuing excellence for every student, we have to find the best way, the best space and place and time to help all of our students. So more to come on that. More to come on creating a family-school liaison positions for birth through grade 12. And it's, I'll be meeting tomorrow with Louis W. at the state regarding how we're using our Family Resource Center dollars, how we could possibly better use them, starting in birth with a focus on family and the student, and then moving up through the grades, grade six through 12, on focusing on the young adult for us and helping them advocate and learn. More to come on that as well, as we revise the job description and we start to repurpose how we're currently doing business. And then the last is our Academy of Manufacturing, Engineering, and Technology and providing more hands-on learning for students. You'll also be hearing from a representative from Oi Cokey Industries tonight. So not to answer now, but think about the questions you have. If you hear something and you have a question about it, I am always available and if I don't have the answer, someone has the answer. So we're good for now? And I think we're gonna turn it over for the next presentation, I believe. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. We have a preschool team here for the consolidation of schools in New Britain. I am Terry Turcot, I'm a coordinator of preschool. I have Danielle Singleton here with me this evening, she is a coordinator of special education, and Megan Adams is the preschool liaison for the city of New Britain. So, good evening. We are here to propose the consolidation of preschool for next year. So you may ask, why would we consolidate our preschool programs? We currently have four different sites. We have a site at DeLoreto, Lincoln, Roosevelt, and at Gaffney. So we are proposing to consolidate the DeLoreto and Lincoln site into Roosevelt. So we would have two sites, one site would be Roosevelt, and the other site would be over at Gaffney. So this would establish a preschool center with a cohesive preschool approach to teaching and learning. We would be able to maximize efficiency in staffing, time, and productivity. It will be a centralized staff with preschool expertise to support improved teacher practice for all. It'll be a streamlined process and procedures. We will have targeted professional development based on student needs. We will focus on creating a developmentally appropriate preschool space in our building at Roosevelt. We'll maximize resources for executive functioning skills and developmentally appropriate practice. It will allow equal access to the DeLoreto lottery for all kindergarten students in the district. And it will also have an instructional leader, which would be me, with the extensive knowledge of preschool standards assessment and NIAC requirements.
Questions so far?
Yeah. Can you please reiterate, what exactly is the issue right now with having the preschools separate? What is the main concern that we're looking at? And how many of the students would that mean? That how many of the preschool bodies would we have in these two locations?
So currently, there are two classes at DeLoreto, and there are four different classes at Lincoln. So six classes total would be moved to Roosevelt. And it would effectively and efficiently use our staffing because I would be in one location to oversee all of those preschool classes. Where now I'm covering four different sites and running around trying to make sure that the same message is being portrayed to all the staff. And it's difficult to have time to meet with preschool staff only because I'm at Roosevelt with that staff and to get to the other sites. So it would be streamlined in that sense, where we'd be able to just have professional development, we'd be able to be a more cohesive team.
Does this mean that we also, let me think of how I'm trying to work this. Does that, first of all, do we have the facilities in these two places to accommodate all the children? And then would there be deprivation for them in their developmental learning? Would it be more conducive to their learning, or would it not be if there are a whole bunch of more little people around?
Right, right. So we have six classrooms right now that Smalley kindergarten are using. So with Smalley being built and all of the kindergartners moving back to Smalley, that would leave six empty classrooms, which would accommodate the four Lincoln classes and the two DeLoreto classes. So all the students currently that are enrolled would not be impacted, we have the same amount of students in the center. We do have a video of some ideas that we'd like to share with you, just some ideas, and we'll get to that. It would just be a center of preschool, we can add a lot of different activities and different burning throughout the hallways as we walk through. And you'll see, we have a video of some final hopscotch on the floor that the students are able to walk through the halls and do hopscotch, and there's some hands on the walls, and you'll be able to see that through a video in a couple of minutes.
And I've got one question here. She asked my other question. In terms of transportation, how does that impact transportation?
So we look into transportation with this, we have a transportation department, and there wouldn't be much of a difference in funding. There would be maybe a little bit of gas and fuel, we were told, but it wouldn't really impact transportation costs much.
Terry, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Some of the hardships that our families face is, we only have room for 150 full-day slots, and our parents are working parents, and they need more than even the nine-to-three. So I am currently in conversation with one of our, with the YMCA, similar to what we do at the elementary schools, where we have before and after. We are looking to put a before-and-after program, and it gets a little bit dicey, but for our full-day students, it would be before-and-after onsite at Roosevelt. So they would come in, similar to what we have at our elementary sites, where they come in and they, it's daycare, for an hour before school, and then up to six o'clock in the evening for our families. So the kids really get from 7:30 to six o'clock if needed. That would be for our full-day slots. Where it gets a little more confusing is, we still have some morning kiddos that come to school, and some afternoon preschoolers that come to school. So we're working with the YM now to say, if our little morning session kids still need extended time because their parents are working, that we would take, we would have transportation, bring them to off-site to the YM. And the flip, to be true, for students who are in the afternoon. If a parent needs childcare in the morning because their son or daughter or whatever have an afternoon slot, they would drop their child off at the Y and then be bused from the Y to our program. So that we're, what we're trying to do is make it an eight-to-five or an eight-to-six day if our parents need it for all of our students, even though we don't have the funding to do full-day slots for all of our students. And that is in the works now, talking about how we could possibly do that, so that our families have an option of. And if they don't choose it, and they want to do the pickup or just do the half-day only, that's an option too. It's not, they don't have to do that. Sorry. Would they do that as part of, like, you pay for your daycare before and then pay for after? And so, similar to how we handle it at the elementary school, it's a sliding scale, and, you know, scholarship is available, but they'll want all of that. So it would be a similar thing.
How many more, so how many, approximately how many students are in the AM and in the PM? How many more students would be able to?
It's the same.
So 150?
Megan, you can answer that, you've got the numbers.
So we have, currently in district funded slots, there are 206 part-day slots, so that's split between the classrooms.
Right.
A and BM. So it's safe to say about 103 and then 105.
Okay, so 206 students potentially could either have the before care
Right.
or the after care extended day, so that they would be covered for the full day.
Well, that, so that is where it is tricky, because that would be the off-site before-and-after care program, so we have to find a space for that.
Because we don't have space.
Full-day program.
Potentially, that's the amount of babies that we're looking at. That's the number of children.
Yeah.
Right, but that is, that's the number. Gotcha.
So it's both space and funding, in that, you know, we have funding for half-day pre-K. Some parents may need
Full-day.
not get it, so they would probably be using Care for Kids or something to help pay for care.
So we look at 356 preschoolers.
About 400 preschoolers, which is, which is a lot to serve.
Again, what is the age for preschool?
But that's only there. Is that only there?
No. Are parents happy with this new initiative coming along? What's their feedback?
So we haven't spoken to parents yet, it's only a proposal, we're coming to it first. We do have a timeline, yes, for our messages.
Can I just, Simon, because I'm in these preschools all the time. I think it makes much more sense to consolidate what you can. I would be against it if we had room or preschools in every neighborhood school, because I think that's where they belong, but we don't, and we never will. So I think it makes more sense to have fewer preschools where you can consolidate the services, because I see, I go into one school or another, and including the other agencies in the district, you know, Early Learning Center at, over on East Street, and Head Start, and see district staff who are over there, you know, doing observations and so forth. It just makes sense. I would rather see them in their neighborhood schools, that's not going to happen. So to have a consolidate, two stronger consolidated teams, I think, makes a lot of sense.
And I apologize in advance, because we're probably stepping on a lot of the points of your presentation. But I also think, to echo what Ms. Cheney said, this also gives us the possibility for bringing in more community partners if we have one solid location, just like we've done things with community health services at other places in some of our partnerships, especially for the earliest parents to have some possible services and be able to connect with those young, those parents with younger children early on, and provide the parents' support through this location as well, I think is another thing that we definitely should look in. Like, if we go this way, it's something that I think would be a benefit, just being able to message to those parents and connect with those parents early on in their child's academic career. And it seems to me it'd be no different than any other preschool where you have six, seven, eight, nine, 10 classes of, you know, but they're in their separate classrooms. It's just in one building.
I'm just voicing this because I have to. I understand the need. I just struggle because, as a school district, we try to get family involvement, and parents to be more involved in their children, and I find that this makes it just so much easier for them to just keep dropping. And we're talking these little, little, little kids that, we know that that zero-to-five-year-old is so important, and I'm a strong believer that family is the first corporation that a child should be with, and before we start sending them out to, you know, the different areas. So I just struggle with that because, yes, we, I understand that there are parents that, yeah, but then there's others that are just going to fall on that and just start just bringing their kids. I've seen it, I've seen it, where these little, little kids, then we wonder why they have so many sometimes behavior issues, you know, when they come to like first and second grade because, but I just had to say that, that's my biggest concern with this, and stay quiet right now.
Just a question and then a comment. Is this something that is being proposed by the school district, or is it something that you three have collaboratively worked?
Is this something that's being proposed by the school district? We work for the school district, so.
And my comment is, I think that it's great when, you know, when we look to combine our resources and focus on giving our kids what they need at that age, and making sure they're prepared versus being spread out. So if we don't have the resources to give this program what it needs to better prepare our kids for kindergarten, then I'm definitely for consolidating it so that you as a group can focus on getting them everything they need, because I think that preparation is important, to get them for kindergarten, ready for kindergarten. And I agree with Nancy as well, and I think self-esteem is built within the first seven years of life. And, you know, the earlier we get them, the better. So, but anyway, just my comment.
I think I have a series of questions. The Roosevelt building, has that housed preschool before?
Yes, we currently have seven classes there.
Their preschool or K?
We have seven preschool and then K.
Oh, okay, so then when the K leaves, that will be the preschool.
The preschools.
Has, has the district gone through NACI accreditation with the preschoolers?
We're NIAC accredited.
Yeah, yeah. When I went through it last year, the lady told me it's NACI, so it's stuck in my head. Yeah, that's what she said. She said, oh, we're Connecticut, they said, she acted like she was upset, so now. Sorry.
We are NIAC accredited.
And the thing that would be nice with consolidating as well is, so as it's set up right now, every year there's a site being accredited. So currently, DeLoreto is being accredited this year. So that was my next question. So how is the cycle right now? He's getting accredited one year, and how, yeah, that was literally my next question.
So DeLoreto is up for accreditation this year, so we're waiting for them to come out and accredit and visit. Next year will be Lincoln, and then we'll have a year off, and then we will go through Gaffney and Roosevelt. Gaffney and Roosevelt are together for accreditation, but our hope is to contact NIAC and self-report and to make sure that we can just be under one, one program, so that we're all accredited at the same time, and we don't have to worry about having different year levels of accreditation.
So you think if you consolidate, you foresee being able to sort of change, ask for a change in the cycle so that they're all
Yes.
at the same time? How does that building function with outdoor facilities, playground?
We have a playground.
There is a playground?
There is, yes. We have a playground, we have two portable areas where we have trikes, and we have all kinds of little activities and vehicles and things for our kids to use. We make it work.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Just to, Bill, what Dr. Sims just said, you know, again, if we have this all in fewer spaces, it also means that if we're looking to provide a more robust playground, then it's one site with the little bitty, bitty equipment, rather than trying to do half and half at all the sites, so, you know.
And I just wanted to add one thing. It's difficult, you know, when you have two teachers on a team. So at DeLoreto right now, we have two preschool teachers. And when we want them to collaborate, there's only one other person, because on a Wednesday afternoon, if you have an hour, by the time they travel over to the Roosevelt site, 30 minutes is eaten up in travel. This allows preschool teachers to be together
Collaborate.
to know the preschool standards and work together on that. And Kathy, I agree. I mean, I think our ideal would be to have neighborhood preschool, so they would feed right in and just do a PK5 setting. But we, every building is very tight on space.
And remember too, that there are other preschool options in the city, so if there are, you know, and some of them work better. HRA works better for some parents. You know, and they have their, they have their early childhood, they have their daycare program. There are other options. Preschool is not, you know, we have to have them and do them, so, you know, it's, they're getting a great program, and I think parents recognize that, and it's a sliding scale, and the facilities are really nice. And, you know, compared to other classrooms that I have been in, if anybody asks me, I tell them, try to get into the public schools because it's a much better program. But there are neighborhood options for those parents who
Need them.
who need, who need that and who feel strongly about that. But the kids are getting a robust collaborative program, which can only be strengthened, I think, if it's a fairly large one and a fairly large one, instead of a big one, a smaller one, and, you know, dinkier ones. So I do think it's, I do think it's the best use of staff, of a lot of talented personnel because it takes a special teacher to
Do preschool.
Yeah, I'm sure we're three-year-olds and, you know, so I, I think it's a great, I think it's a great thing. I'd like to see a big preschool campus.
Yeah.
And just the last thing, I just want to say, the wraparound problem, I think that works, is wonderful, because when I started out at the preschool fair, that was the biggest challenge, just trying to make sure your child's gear is on, who's not being
So with this, the benefit of the district-wide preschool, we have touched upon some of these, but the lottery at DeLoreto would be eliminated for preschool, which would provide equity and access to all kindergarten slots at DeLoreto.
Can you go back? Can you, can you talk a little bit? Because you had to explain to me why that was so. Can you explain most, what the numbers are, Megan?
So currently, DeLoreto lottery for preschool is 36 slots. So I think there's 80 kindergarten spaces available at DeLoreto, and if we pull the kids in at preschool, DeLoreto automatically loses
36 slots.
50% of the availability of kindergarten
Right, because they roll them up.
if you will. So when we take DeLoreto lottery, we pull it out, and we push those children over to
work is wonderful because when I started out at DeLoreto, that was the biggest challenge, just trying to make sure your child's here before he's not here.
So with this, the benefit of the district-wide preschool, we have touched upon some of these, but the lottery at DeLoreto would be eliminated for preschool, which would provide equity and access to all kindergarten slots at DeLoreto.
Can you go back? Can you, can you talk a little bit because you had to explain to me why that was so? Can you explain most, what the numbers are?
So currently, DeLoreto lottery for preschool is 36 slots. So I think there's 80 kindergarten spaces available at DeLoreto, but if we pull the kids in at preschool, DeLoreto automatically loses 50% of the availability of kindergarten applicants, if you will. So when we take DeLoreto lottery, we pull it out and we push those children over to Roosevelt, it's now opening up more opportunities for families in the community to attend DeLoreto through the maintenance process.
And how many parents specifically asked for DeLoreto for preschool?
Not many. A handful, I think. We really have to find those families and reach out to them. So I would say maybe 12 families are really invested in applying and being accepted into DeLoreto as this.
I think that's important not to be minimized because there are lots of families who may be interested in sending their child to DeLoreto who use, either do not use preschool if they have the kids at home until kindergarten age or use another preschool provider and for them to not really, you know, have the same access because they didn't put them in. So I think that's really important.
So I can touch upon that question. Again, the majority of the parents, this is going to be my sixth year only lottery for pre-K to eight. And for pre-K, there is no lottery simply because the demand is anywhere between eight to 10 parents every year. So the rest of the families, it's about, you know, the folks here that will, you know, place students in those particular spots. So most of the time when the parents are interested in going to DeLoreto, well, here's an awesome school. But the reality is because they have other siblings that are going to those schools. So as a result of that, by opening up the kindergarten, now we're talking about potentially 80 spots where it would be 36 spots because a lot of the folks that are pre-K automatically get into kindergarten and those spots are eliminated. But what we have at DeLoreto is one out of every four spots automatically goes to a sibling. There's a sibling lottery. So let's say that there are 80 spots and there may be eight families that have children in DeLoreto. We're talking about 20 potential spots for them if it's one out of every four, right? So, and there's usually less than that. So every family that wants to have their child in DeLoreto because they have a sibling there automatically gets in there where that provides them at least an opportunity. And now we're talking about the other 60 and the majority of the time, we have about 120 applicants for kindergarten with maybe 10, 12, 15 spots sometimes. And so we're making some of those changes that will help a lot more of our kindergarten families be able to attend DeLoreto that really want to be there because most of them get placed there, not necessarily we're saying, well, we want to be at DeLoreto. So that's the difference. That again, and just echoing what they're saying, we're kind of in silence when we have meetings that we need to have, sometimes it's during the day because we have to work around schedules and, you know, they're getting it kind of secondhand and they don't even have an opportunity to collaborate with their colleagues. It's only one or the other. So having an opportunity to be together just provides an overall robust setting for them, not only for the staff, but for the children, a lot more opportunities for them that they just don't have in DeLoreto.
Okay, so currently over at Gaffney School, we have four key PK classes, which are autism-specific classes. And our goal is always to have the students integrated into the, going into the integrated classes, have those experiences with non-disabled peers. And what we're finding is we have, because we have the four classes that are now presently integrating into two integrated classes, it kind of limits the opportunities for students to have that additional time in the general education setting. So we're looking to move one large integrated classroom over to the Gaffney site. There is a space there so that we increase the integration opportunities for our students. So another positive that we found was that if a child is in a three-year-old program, sometimes the following year they move to another school just because of space. So a child can go into Lincoln as a three-year-old and then move to Roosevelt as a four-year-old. So it would be nice to have a continuum where these students aren't Roosevelt when they're three and then they automatically stay at Roosevelt when they're four as well. So we can provide less movement for families and for students as well. We are considering and working on making a STEAM room, it's called a Play Lab at Roosevelt for students. So all of the students that attend Roosevelt would be able to come on over and experience STEAM. We're looking into a plan for some professional development for our teachers as well during that time. We are creating physical literacy hallways with focused on gross motor skills and executive functions. We do have YouTube video to share.
It's just text, it's not a link. Yeah, but it's just text, it's not linked. Oh, there it is.
You can watch it and get the idea, you'll see. You can watch it and get the idea, you'll see. We're going to keep it preschool promotion test.
It really helps me calm down, helps me focus. The problem is that that shows somewhat of a preventative measure for some behavior issues that might happen by a child who cannot regulate themselves. The benefits are just academic. Doing this every day increases our physical competence, which increases our confidence and which makes it more likely that we'll be more active every day.
Oh, my gosh.
And it's also more mental and health benefits. Less than 30% of all children in teams need Canada's 24-hour movement guidelines.
That's beautiful work.
In 2013, the global cost of physical inactivity was nearly $70 billion in healthcare and lost productivity. That's up to 3% of national healthcare costs and that doesn't even include mental health.
Our society has changed, our value has changed in our workplace, in our schools, in every single sector where movement will be valued and worked as reading and writing.
At schools like this, that change has begun. Karen Pauls, 60 years.
The littler ones love it, the bigger ones don't. Even with the bigger ones.
Let's not get political.
Just pretend we do.
That's too political for.
So that is what we are currently working on, getting quotes to make Roosevelt an early learning center, a true early learning center with all of our preschools together. We're looking to see how we can put that in the hallways. If you've ever visited Roosevelt, we have a nice space that would provide that for our students.
And I just want to add too, because I see high school in the audience, our plan is to, with the STEAM and the Play Lab that we're creating, which is its own space, it's not the hallways, is to employ, maybe not for money, but for credit, our high school and middle school students in terms of creating the gears and the things that need to go on the walls and those kinds of things. So getting our olders to build for the babies.
I just want to say, personally, I think this is a really good idea moving forward. I definitely would support it as a board member. I would, I'd say that's important to reach out, especially to our current three-year-old parents who, if this is going into place for next year, would be affected by the move. To message to them, let them know and give them, you know, a simple one-pager of why, make it nice and easy, easy to understand what the changes are and also marketing it out to our, to our new parents that we're going to bring in, especially if we can work out that partnership with the YMCA for those services, just to let the parents know what's available and, you know, to go forward with that. Because at least it's, it's not like something we're changing that's affecting sixth grade where it's going to be affecting a much larger number of students and everyone going forward. This is really getting them right at the beginning of the door. So it's really about communicating effectively to those new parents.
So we do have a timeline for the next couple of months and that goes right along with what you were saying, Mr. Morcer. So in February, we are communicating our proposal to the Board of Ed.
It's February.
We will be sharing this with the preschool staff, the proposal, letting them know. And we plan to message to parents similar to what you have suggested. We will have a brochure that will go home to parents with the messaging because our registration is opening in March. So we want parents to know before registering that this is what our plan is and to expect for their students to come to Roosevelt. It might be a good possibility that they will be at the Roosevelt campus. And lastly, we're planning a preschool parent information session for parents so they can come and they can tour the building, we can have a curriculum night to show parents what their children are expected to learn in preschool with the Connecticut ELDs's and they can meet some of the teachers, they can walk through the classrooms, we can have some computers out where they can register that evening if they like to so that we can have a comprehensive open house for them and we can have a chance to discuss the registration process and what they can expect.
I'd just like to add now for you guys, thank you so much for that presentation. But on the administrative end, I think, at least from my point of view, as you're putting this plan together, I think there's a fine line between providing education and providing daycare. And I think that partnering with outside, you know, organizations to assist with daycare, but I think it's important to keep the daycare aspect out of the school district to minimize our costs when it comes to bus, to make sure we're busing, you know, to and from and then, you know, it's.
They're picked up.
We'll see how it all comes to fruition.
Can I, can I just chime in? Go into a preschool class, there is no daycare.
No, no, no. I'm talking about the after programs that we're talking about.
And there's just no, yeah, I mean, it's just not, it's not daycare at all in any way, shape or form. These kids are so engaged with doing stuff. Even, even when they're having their, you know, their community meals, you know, they're really, they're really so engaged in doing stuff. So I don't think there's any, any qualms about they're in school and daycare would be, after-school care would be elsewhere with different staff, you know.
Yeah, I just clarified.
And just from a pure dollars and cents, it's easier to transport a large number of students to one after-school vendor than to have to drop them all off at home separately.
If I understood you correctly, you mean the parents pay for the daycare? I think that's what he was saying.
It's separate, right? That would be their fund and they also pay for preschool too.
Right. School has, right. Both things have a cost to them. As a person who has two little ones back to back and they both benefited from the DeLoreto pre-K roll-up and kindergarten, I had one in preschool and one in kindergarten. I see how that, how that dynamic works. I was grateful because it was full day and I couldn't, if I had been in half-day, I don't know what I would have done. You know, was that whole figuring out how to get them all day long, you work all day and the program stops at three and you're like, okay, now, or 2:30, three hours of trying to finagle and finding somewhere. So on all fronts, I think that this is going to be a win for our parents. I think it's going to be something that is going to be easy to market. It's going to make less stress and less anxiety. You're already leaving your three-year-old or your four-year-old with somebody else than if you have to go back to work and you don't want to in the first place. And then to know that they're going to be in a program and there's going to be lots of other kids their age around and the fluidity between after-school and before-care. I actually wish the before-care was happening two years ago because I was in need of it. I did find someone, but you know, it's, it is something that I think is going to really, it's a stressor for parents and I think that it's, we're going to do a lot to make that burden a little lighter. So I'm very excited to see this initiative. The only thing I would, would say, and this is as a community person, that I hope that the buzz and the information gets out vast and wide so that people are really aware of what's going on and so that we don't have, you know, people don't hear about it. You know, yes, there's limited spaces, but the more people that hear about it so that they can make a smart decision and participate in the process, I think will be beneficial. And the brochure hopefully is at least in one other language, if not several. Any other comments, concerns? All hearts and minds clear?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Any other thoughts?
Yes, do you have the?
Yes, 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 yes. Come on down.
I'll throw it under the spread.
Pre-K to high school. Yay! All right. So if we would have the presentation for the New Britain High School, Matt, could I be?
Britain School System.
And I'm Ray Roberts. I am the training and development coordinator at OK Industries. I'm here as a replacement of president of my company, Jason Howie. He is traveling for business. We really didn't want to be here, so I'm here.
I'd also like to acknowledge the advisor, the manufacturing engineering technology advisor before, that's been meeting every Wednesday. They're also here. It's in the back. We have Dorothy from Richards, Lori Therial, who's the chair for the academy, and we have a student, Joe Figaro, as well. So the mission of the manufacturing academy is to create the best in-class manufacturing program at New Britain High School that develops not only the talent pipeline but supports the current and future workforce of our community through a pre-apprenticeship and an apprenticeship program. Why do we want to do this at New Britain High School? In following suit with the other academies, the manufacturing pathway in the economy in New Britain is in the need for the workforce. And I'm going to, Joe Figaro was a student in the Academy of Finance, working in a manufacturing company, is handing out the why, self, self, I can't say that, self, self-keeping for us, to talk about the why and the importance that we need manufacturing as a training facility, not just for our students, for our, for our community, for our hands and mind approach, taking what we've been doing. Superintendent Sarah started with STEM, K and 12, but really lifting up what we are doing at the high school in manufacturing. We want to build a workforce for the high-paid demand and skilled jobs in the modern manufacturing. Currently, there are 13,000 open manufacturing jobs in Connecticut with an average compensation of $95,000. We also have, there are more than 43, 4,300 manufacturers in Connecticut employing around $60,000, 160,000 people. So let's talk about the legacy of New Britain. New Britain was known on the onset of the 20th century to be the hardware capital of the world, also known as hard. the world, also known as Hardware City. In Latin terms, that's translated, the slogan and the motto changed to be, "The industry fills the hive and enjoys the honey." Back on the onset of the 20th century, there are, back on the onset, there are many manufacturing headquarters that were housed in New Britain. We have Stanley Works, Corbin, and many others, and we'd like to bring the Hardware City back to New Britain by reinventing our manufacturing pathway at the high school. Today, New Britain is home to more than two dozen major manufacturers, and several more in the surrounding towns of Berlin, Plainfield, New Britain, and Farnham. So what are the benefits of having a manufacturing pathway at the high school? For our students, outside of unlimited opportunities for students with natural mechanical aptitudes and a passion for modern manufacturing, the academy will be established similar to all the academies at the high school, where there are four elements. They'll have the advisory board, work-based learning, curriculum instruction, and the academy structure for the sustainability model, and it is a cost-effective alternative for our students, going into the manufacturing pathway is a cost-effective alternative versus a four-year school. What we're proposing, a four-year college, what we're proposing as part of the academy is the certification process, where the students can not only learn the curriculum in the high school courses, become articulated with our surrounding Tungus, as NUTU, CCSU universities, they have dual articulation, and also become certified in a NIMs credential, which can be blueprint, reading, mechanical safety, and a variety of others, allowing students to jump right into a career right after high school post-graduation.
Can I just add one thing to that, too? With the rising costs of college and families, and just having four of my own and knowing the rising costs, trying to give our students a potential, a way to earn dollars while they're in college. So it's not necessarily saying that the students will get this and go, they might go right to work, but they might go right to work so that they can go to college later on, and I think that we have to offer those viable ways of earning dollars to help offset the enormous rise in tuition.
Can I just add a manufacturing side, I know I can speak for OK. We actually do our biggest thing, and that's why I have a job in Training and Development, is we are a firm believer in training our employees, so we have tuition reimbursement, we pay for them to go to training, so like Nancy said, that even if they don't want to go to college right away, if they're working, chances are the company will send them four schooling, and then they won't have the debt to go with it.
Many of our students work while they're in college, and this is a great way, not just to change the life of a student, but the family dynamics, learning the skill and the trade, and the next point talks about what the starting salary could be with these credentials, it's amazing. The opportunity to pursue these jobs, it's in your slide as well, it talks, $67,000 to $123,000 earning potential for Connecticut manufacturers, and that's just amazing. I just have to say that again, that to you, $67,000 to $123,000 salary, starting, that's great with these credentials. That changes the life, the economics of our families, of our students, of our businesses in our towns and surrounding towns. 18% increase in the average annual pay of Connecticut manufacturer workers since 2017, the industry and the career pathways on the rise. 12% of Connecticut manufacturing workforce is expected to retire by 2020. With that void, as a school, we're in a great place and a great opportunity to be able to fill those closing needs. So we talked earlier about what is an apprenticeship, or a pre-apprenticeship. An apprenticeship program would be similar to that of, we've talked in the past about work-based learning of 120 hours. We're taking that and expanding it to 2,000 hours of work and earning salaries and in school. So students would have 2,000 hours with our manufacturing companies, that would earn them a pre-apprenticeship and an apprenticeship position, allowing them to stay on after. So it's a longer period of time, jumping into more skills throughout the area, within a specific area, or if the company would choose to have to move around from one sector to the next, learning the entire spectrum of that industry, allowing them to have that many hours and compensate it. Part of the requirements of the program within the academy, it was similar to having a champion, a manufacturing champions. We have the advisory board following the four elements of the NAP Academy. The advisory board meets monthly, but expanding our members of the board, having committees within the board for fundraising, recruitment, curriculum, sustainability, those are all the action groups or committees within the advisory board. Leveraging, I mentioned earlier, the NIMs credentials, Tungus is also offering the NIMs credential, which is, and as NUTU, who's been a partner as well, which is a great alignment, vertically aligned for our students at the high school to jump right into college, getting the credits here, and then finishing additional certifications while they're at that school, which is great. Trips to the manufacturing sector, back and forth field trips, so they can see hands-on what it's like, what's a day in the life. One of the things we identify in this generation, in part to Superintendent Sarah bringing STEAM in earlier, there's a mental image for a lot of our youth about what manufacturing is because of the way it was. It is not that same way anymore, so bringing our students to see what the manufacturing facilities look like is phenomenal. It's changing completely, so changing that mental image is part of the program and seeing what their options are. Screening process to identify those that are interested, and the marketing campaign, encouraging students to participate, identifying what their career interests are and seeing if there's a great fit. We want to ensure when our students are going to one of our partners for an apprenticeship or work-based learning, we want to make sure it's the right fit and it's a good setting. The program budget. The anticipated, existing manufacturing path, hallway at New Britain High School is quite outdated, although there's a lot of things happening in there, it's really outdated. A lot of our partners, including the advisory board here, and with Mr. Howey from OK, and Elena, and Chamber of Commerce, and the mayor are all identifying that this is, the equipment we have isn't quite what the students will need in the current manufacturing pathway. So we put together a budget and estimated that it would be close to a billion to revamp that hallway. However, there's others. The good news is...
I'm like, the money's coming.
It's that our partners are fantastic, OK Industries and our partners, are looking to raise close to 800,000 of that with a kickoff in a few weeks at Stanley Black and Deck, with the Chamber of Commerce and the mayor, identifying all of the equipment that we need, updating our milling machines, our lathes, our grinders, our bridge ports, the consumables, the storage, and we actually also have a proposal, we have a gentleman who's willing to come in and kind of reface two of our rooms in the manufacturing hallway, the first two rooms, from the floors, the walls, the ceiling, the lights, changing the environment, so it simulates that of the existing issue. Some of our funding sources are area businesses, Community Foundation of Great New Britain, American Savings Foundation, the State Department of DOL, Workforce Investor Fords, PMA, and many other foundations, and our fundraising will continue as the need arises and forever. Our strategic partners, area businesses, City of New Britain, New Britain Board of Ed, Superintendent Sarah, Great New Britain Chamber of Commerce, Area Businesses, Department of Labor, Tungus, Capital Workforce Partners, National Institute of Meta-Working Skills, as NUTU as well, they've provided us with a great scoping sequence of curriculum that we can compare to CCSU of Engineering, United Way, and if anyone, there's many, many, many partners that want to see this program and pathway in the academy be very successful. Our corporate partner benefits.
So it creates an accessible talent pipeline, so we, all manufacturers in the area, we are constantly looking for people, there is a huge need right now. We constantly have jobs open, and the skills just aren't there because, in all honesty, manufacturing had went away for a little bit, no one was really interested because everyone was so set on going to college and making everyone go to college, we need one of those. There's also tax incentives that are available for employees who register as a Department of Labor apprenticeship sponsor, which we actually are at OK Industries, so we actually have our own apprenticeship program, that we have four current apprentices right now who are working to become certified tool and die makers. So what that means is companies who employ registered apprentices, we can receive a tax credit up to $7,500 per apprentice, or 50% of their wages are covered by the Department of Labor. There's also the Manufacturing Innovation Fund, that does support training costs up to $2,500 a year or $1,250 per apprentice. It's really just a part-time commitment from the manufacturers, they're really doing us to justice by having pre-apprenticeships and apprentice programs at our companies. It's letting us kind of try out all of these employees or students, if they come from New Britain High School, and it's really, they're helping us, and we're trying to help them, it really is the partnership. It builds a skills gap to ensure business sustainability and growth, and it creates a great alignment with community and social responsibility that we all, as manufacturing companies, want to give back to the city of New Britain.
Some of our potential corporate partners, area manufacturers that are listed, there is many, I won't list them all, I'll give everyone a minute just to read them off because we want to use credit. I know in the audience, we have Richard Reshening, as well as Warwick Carrier, from OK Industries, so I want to take a moment to ask him. As you can see, the list is long, very long, and the passion is there, and the need is there, and it's perfect to have all these partners together, that potentially helps us build a great path. The outcomes, to start, we have to, we would like at least 25 graduates per year, starting as a pilot, increasing that number every year, so that eventually the academy will be as large as the Academy of Finance and the Academy of Health Sciences, as well as the apprenticeship is a 2,000-hour program, but we also want to offer a 120-hour program, so that students can earn credit and learn the skills at 120 hours and maybe change companies along the way. We would like, the outcomes will be matriculation with colleges, so students will be able to get dual articulation credit, which means college credit while they're getting high school credit, so when they jump into a program at Tungus, they're already ahead of the game or Central or as NUTU. And as well as with the other academies, the outcome is to be distinguished by the National Academy Foundation standards, similar to the other academies here at the high school. Proven track record. OK Industries and Jason Howard participated in the Health Academy many years ago, and the track record of the success rate the Health Academy has was supported by the following partners, we have the Mayor of New Britain, Superintendent of Schools, President and CEO of Hospital of Central Connecticut, President and CEO of Hospital of Special Care, Capital Workforce Partners, Great New Britain Chamber of Commerce, Tungus Community College, American Savings Foundation, Community Foundation of Great New Britain, Comcast, New Britain Rotary, Community Chest of New Britain, and the Pettit Family Foundation, all part of the Health Academy. The program highlights, the highlights currently, there's a type course curriculum in place, 390 students, Mr. Mike Horn, 2012 National Principal of the Year, Darlene Clark, a teacher in the academy, was 2012 Teacher of the Year, and Mr. Michael Nysiais, 2013 District Teacher of the Year, some of the, for that proven track record. We have one more, another sample, is the Academy of Finance, very similar in our supporters in the following, the Mayor of New Britain, Superintendent of Schools, HRA of New Britain, President and CEO of a key financial credit union, Senior Vice President of Finance and CFO of the Hospital for Special Care, Connecticut Department of Labor, Tungus Community College, American Savings Foundation, CCSU, Deloitte, Travelers, Town and City Clerk, City of New Britain, Sir Speedy, and Central Connecticut Communications. We have 200 members currently enrolled, 17 students obtained NAP track certification, that's a third-party assessment of four courses plus your work-based learning. We have 67 students obtained an internship, 55 completed the full 125 hours. We have 17 edge scholars from Travelers. Travelers identifies 10 students, five that could attend Central, and five that could attend the Business School of UConn in the state, they pick 10, so New Britain High competes with all other schools, and we, New Britain High School has 17 students, it's a four-year scholarship program, which provides them their tuition paid mentorship, similar to a pre-apprenticeship but in the finance sector, and then potentially jobs after, which is phenomenal. The program earned NAP distinguished status within three years. New Britain High was one of 11 schools that got to participate in the NAP annual benefit in New York, and one of 50 schools that participate in the Lenovo network. There's some 50 schools and the 600-plus, 600, 700 schools across the nation. So I'd like to get involved. Okay, have any questions?
How old's a 2,000-hour apprenticeship for students for high schools?
So part of it could be in the classroom, as long as the curriculum is identified to the pre-apprenticeship program, and then the remaining is in the hours, it could be on the weekend and after-hours. So there's a benefit manufacturing, because there's different shifts, but it would be up to 1,000 hours combined in the field and in the classroom.
So it's 1,000 hours per year, and, I mean, I'm trying to figure, how do you do 2,000?
It could be both, plus the summer.
I was going to say summer.
Yes, full-time summer, vacations, and meetings.
And academy is 11th and 12th grade, or does it start from ninth grade?
It's a three to four year, but the start is now, I know we do some, the recruitment would start now to identify the students, but it would, we're looking at the class of sophomore into junior year, we can start it. There is some background skills and would be the solid words.
So it would be almost three years, plus the summer, so it wouldn't be as, because it does, 2,000 sounds a lot, but then when you think, break it over three years with summers and all that other stuff, and classwork, the coursework hours will kind of be...
Yeah, it's that freshman coursework that is introductory in nature for all the academies, so the class could start.
Does that count?
We haven't worked the curriculum in the freshman yet, because we've been focusing on 10th and 12th, but we are working to the commissioners, like, to see the alignment. The commissioners' network for the high school is also working on career pathways and looking at advanced manufacturing as another curriculum structure to mirror and complement the NIMs, so there's opportunities to add more courses along the way.
I want to say, I think this is wonderful that we gave it back to the community. When I started in the past, we had a school, we had some arts and arts activity, hoping that kids could leave school and go to college, and then we got all the partners and the whole thing, like, where's that if they go to college? And we forgot about this part of it, you know, and this problem, this type of program is very good, but it affects students, the minimum are very good with their hands, and we used to use those programs for mainstreaming the most people. So I'm hoping that this is going to be open for them, and there's not going to be some back test that would keep them from...
The academy models we follow, they're open academies, open enrollment.
Yes.
I'd just echo what you'd said, I've been saying since 2000 and whatever, that we really need to bring more of this back, and we're doing a huge disservice to students by pushing everybody go to college, everyone go to college. It's not the right fit for everybody, and frankly, I think it's why you've seen such a reduction in the trades in general. On a more individual note, did you say that the gentleman in the audience, the student designed this? Because it's really well laid out. Whoever put this...
That would be OK Industries.
It's very good.
That makes sense.
Oh, yeah. I was going to give a shout-out. Well, OK Industries did an excellent job.
I also want to echo what Mrs. Parker said, too, because, I mean, I remember it as vocational programs, and I know that, you know, the vocational programs were really good until everybody started going to, supposedly was supposed to be going to college, where we know someone doing vocational can actually earn more than some... college, where we know someone doing vocational can actually earn more than someone that just gets a college degree, even though they have all that debt afterwards. But is there a distinction between the vocational programs and the manufacturing? Like, I'm thinking manufacturing, back in the olden days when I was younger, it was like factory work. So is this like the factory work coming back again under manufacturing? Can you explain maybe a little bit of the difference between my mind, where I'm thinking vocational programs, you know, and those manufacturing programs?
So even when I started teaching in two thousand and two, in accounting, we were called vocation head. And then the Carl D. Perkins Grant was all about vocational education, which encompasses everything, from manufacturing to culinary, to child development, to sewing. So vocational education was kind of going back and forth with the way they branded it. The Connecticut Department of Education, CTE, is called application education. They rebranded it to be something different, but the manufacturing workers, the sites do look a lot different than our, the mental image we have growing up. And that has been one of the obstacles, because if we're, if we remember it to be the way it was, and our kids come home and say, Alan, I'm going to manufacturing, everyone goes, oh, because of the lack of knowing the way it is, the stigma, the mental image, and it's completely different. If you walk in some of, and I'll use Richard's machine, we went to them and their floors are clean and they mine at home. They're beautiful, it's bright, it's light, and even the environment is completely different than the way we were in high school rooms right now. But it is all considered vocation, except it's a skill with the hands and mind on, and vocation even back then was offering a skill with your college, with your high school degree.
You know, and I think, too, with manufacturing, is there are so many different facets that we don't think about. You can be a machine operator, you, they need engineers. So, you know, some kids will take the, I'm going to operate a machine, I'm going to program a machine, I'm going to become an engineer, I'm going to design parts, I'm going to inspect parts to see if they're okay. My son, who went to New Britain High and went to college, freaked me out, because last year he took a job in manufacturing, he's been in the U.S., he loves it. It was not what my, when my kids were at New Britain High, it was all, and I told them they could do whatever they want, work with their hands, but it's a very different field from the manufacturing that they, their grandfathers did. You know, their grandfathers made good living for us in manufacturing. It's very different today. But there's so many different things, and once the kids get in, they'll see there's, you know, a lot of skill sets that can be used in manufacturing and are needed in manufacturing.
And that's an important part that needs to be definitely addressed, to parents and students, and, you know, for them to really capture that.
There's so many different things you can do in manufacturing.
Even our student, Joe, is, got into manufacturing as an accounting student, and they have manufacturing, I believe they moved over to quality or something, and same thing with the timber gas. Students got in the accounting door, and then ended up going into engineering. It's like a mini-city in manufacturing, for marketing, the entertainment, Travelers has all, everything as well.
For me, this is a no-brainer, and this comes from someone who would not have graduated high school, we have vocational programs that we add, and I can't imagine that there has to be some direct correlation as to the increase in drop-offs to the decrease in our programming. And I would say to the board as a whole, and if we didn't fight with every part of our being to make sure that this is funded, whether they need the million or the two-hundred-thousand, we'd be shooting ourselves in our foot, and also at the same time telling our local businesses that we don't care to invest in that. So that's my position. I was just going to offer as a marketing tool, maybe talking with Mr. Kanata or anybody else who likes to do webpage design, but a virtual tour of some of the factories, if the factories are okay with it, links to what it looks like. Because as we know, we're visual people, so then you can kind of wrap your mind around what it looks like, because it sounds amazing, and I, the program, no, hands down for me, I believe that this is a great program for our students, but I do think people being able to kind of see, you know, even if you just had your partners and they were live links to their websites, that would be probably easier and less work, sorry. But I do think that that would be something that would help people when they navigate to see what it looks like and what, you know, what the interest is, and help parents. So I think the kids are fine, the kids are fine with anything that they can put their hands on, but it's the parents and the relatives and folks who, even maybe supporters, who want to put money into it, want to see what they're putting their money into.
I was just going to say, I know personally, I give tours of our facility in Berlin, in our facility in Berlin. We do a lot of medical media for components. It looks like a hospital in there, like the floors are completely, it's very bright, but because this is such a need, and we really do want to bring manufacturing back, I do give students tours, and eventually, the goal is to give parents tours, too, so that way they really can see what manufacturing is like today. It's not how it used to be. And the goal also is to have New Britain High School reflect what manufacturing looks like now, so that when they walk into that classroom, it really is a representation of what we do now.
I just wanted to say, I used to bring my students here, here, for special, in high school, and it's cleaner than, it's cleaner than a high school. And the thing that I love about it is the glory, I don't know what it was pushing, it's not hard, I was walking at school, and I used to see some of my ex-students, that you actually hire kids from New Britain and you hire special kids, but that's a class.
All hearts and minds clear? Thank you so much. Okay, board reports. That was all this report, technical?
Technically, we jumped down to presentations. I have a way to answer.
Yeah, because she already started with the presentations, so committee reports. Okay, so board reports. Yeah, I was just going to, just make sure we got all the reports in there, but everyone, all right, so committee reports, then. Personnel, yes.
Personnel did not meet, we had nothing on our agenda statement meeting, however, last week I did have some conversation with Dr. Tucker, and in their new business, there are several, let's see, C, D, E, F, which were added at Dr. Tucker's, if I could speak to them. Some of them are just reiteration, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Curriculum?
We did meet on the twenty-second, and it was a relatively short meeting. We had a presentation regarding the district's philosophy of curriculum, and I don't have access to minutes, so I don't want to give incorrect details, but I know one of the highlights was about switching from the current platform of the BYOC, Build Your Own Curriculum Platform that the district uses, to something more centralized, that people are more likely to access and things like that, so that was a highlight. And then we had a brief sort of phone meeting with Mr. Pierce from the high school regarding, sort of a beginning conversation about adjustments in the New Britain High School's schedule. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
So finance, we did not meet, but I see an awful lot of things on the agenda for tonight, because I was told we didn't have anything for a finance meeting. But on a happy note, we are taking in several donations. Five hundred, yeah, five hundred and forty from the University of Connecticut for physics classes, seven hundred from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain for art enrichment, fifteen hundred from Travelers for New Britain High School, twenty-five hundred from Liberty Bank Foundation for Adult Ed, twenty-one hundred from Community Foundation of Greater New Britain for Art Enrichment, twenty-five hundred from Donors' Choice for the New Britain Transitional Center, twenty-five sixty-four from Donors' Choice for IT class at Pulaski Middle School, thirty-four forty-eight from Community Foundation for cultural books, and then a hundred and ninety thousand from, oh, it's in a grant in the amount, a hundred and ninety thousand from low-performing schools grant for Smith Elementary School.
Have you done proof of that? It's an application?
No.
So it's that. Gotcha.
Right, 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 there it is. Those are bid waivers to spend the money.
But those are all on the consent agenda that I would like to.
Okay, we'll get to that. It's all spending the money for the one ninety, but yes. I got you, I got you.
I'm beside it.
All right, policy.
There's one item that we brought forward to the agenda, and that is updating our, or creating our policy on fiscal force and restrained seclusion, just to bring us in line with state standards.
Okay, now the board reports. Yes, sir?
So one of my colleagues that I work with in Windsor is Dr. Paul Pierce, he's part of our strings program there, and I just wanted to say that the Northern Regionals were at New Britain High School, and he just, every time he's had an interaction with the stage crew and the facilities there, nothing but amazing things to say about the level of professionalism, the courtesy from the student workers and from the staff there, the quality, the quality of the work they do, and just how nicely they present themselves and represent the school district. So that's just something that, every time he's had an interaction, he comes up to me and he gives glowing reviews, so I wanted to pass that along. Really, really proud of that program.
Excellent. Anyone else?
This is more kind of like a personal thing, but my granddaughter, who's in fifth grade in other schools, won the fifth district, Martin Luther King at the county.
Awesome.
One of our state representatives from New Britain, Bobby Sanchez, has now taken over as the co-chair of the Education Committee, and it is a new day up there. The first public hearing that will happen will be all early childhood bills. For those of you who don't know Bobby, he's a longtime head start teacher and worked in at HRA and other parts of the program, but there will be a whole bunch of bills this year. In the past, they used to limit it to about forty bills. I think they've already approved thirty for hearings, and there'll be, so there'll be a lot of hearings on education bills, but just wanted to let you know that we've got one of our legislators in a key role now.
Meryl, if I'm not mistaken, didn't you get, aren't you on the committee for something?
I was just on the transition team.
Transition team, just that?
Just a couple of years.
Transition team, yeah. Yeah, that's it, that's exciting. Okay, well, Superintendent Sarah, myself, Dr. Sanders and Dr. Tucker attended the NAACP, and Mr. Spalding, yes, attended the NAACP meeting, town hall meeting, first of the month, the last Friday, there's going to be four of them, and the topic was education, and it was very interesting. It was a good turnout, I think that we're going to have more of those. I want to say that we're going to look, they're going to look to try to do them quarterly at the Pope. But talking about education and how to be culturally sensitive, what types of issues, how can the community help us, how can we get more information out to the community, our initiatives on minority recruitment, cultural sensitivity training, and also one of the things that came up was the bill, and I think it's five-zero-zero-nine, if I'm not mistaken, to have African-American studies as a mandate for the state of Connecticut as part of curriculum, K through twelve, and integrated within everything, not just A, not just A-class, not just an elective, but integrated through sciences, maths, English, and, and all. So it was a, it was an amazing discussion, and I think that if you have the opportunity going forward to attend them, that would be something that would be worth your while. And then we are also, I am not sure all of us that are going, there are several of us going to.
Atlanta?
Atlanta. What's the official title of it? We are going to.
Dr. Tucker knows.
Dr. Tucker, the title of the conference again? Several of us are going, she has it on her phone. Several of us are going to a conference in Atlanta.
Focus on how do we push past the perceptions of racist poverty to attain high student achievement.
Yes, so we will be going there. The conference is from the sixteenth through the eighteenth of February.
Oh, Mr. Pierce is going, too.
Yes, Mr. Pierce is going.
Did you say that?
I didn't say who was going.
Okay, I just remembered that.
I didn't say who was going, because I said many people are going, but I didn't want to start naming people and forget someone, because I know that, that's easy to do. Awesome, all right. Any other board reports? Yes, Dr. Sanders?
I had a, we get filled with the African-American club from New Britain High School, sort of coincidentally, so on Friday, the first, we had a, first Friday's Empowerment Series Black History event at Diaspora Club on John Street, and the members of the AAC opened the discussion with the Negro National Anthem, they performed a poem, and they were very much a part of the discussion with the panelists, and the panelists, none of which were from New Britain, were extremely impressed with the students and their insight, and their really good questions and things like that. And then Saturday, I ran into Nancy at the talent show.
I was on stage.
At New Britain High School.
That's a joke.
That'd be funny.
Which was nice to see, and nice to see Nancy be there the whole time, which doesn't always happen, and it was a really good show, where I also can show up and my kid kind of, kind of killed it with the guitar.
Baby Shark was like the takeaway of the night.
Oh, my God.
That was funny. So, yeah, just some highlights from our, from our students in that particular program.
Awesome, it was good, awesome, really good. Yes.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I was just trying to relate, was this just recently? Was the last one, I can't remember, but yes, the New Britain Latino Coalition, the beginning of January, had invited Nancy Sarah and Mr. Spalding as well, who attended. They had gone, they had, they met at the police department community room, and they wanted to just discuss the marijuana bill, and so it was a pretty good discussion. And I believe it was also in January where we had the parent forum over at.
Yes, like.
Yes, where we were discussing what jobs were going to look like in the future, and that was a nice turnout with a lot of parents and families and administrators, so.
And we have you.
Yes.
On February.
Twenty-seventh, my son's birthday, yes.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry, February twenty-seventh, too, I'm just saying what we're having. Can I just?
Go ahead, yes, please.
So it's another, it's our next parent forum, it's going to be on February twenty-seventh, and actually, Gail, Nick, and Nicole will be, we're doing some personal invitations to our PTA presidents, our PTAs, and it's around advocating for funding. And so we're going to have a dinner first, and you're all invited, too, and it's just going to be getting information from the board members about what's the real, and then giving them time to break out and help them write messages, and then follow us over to a common council meeting where they can, again, when they, when they come to us in June, it's too late. When the families come and they say they want more dollars, or it's too late, so we need to teach them, so we're having a workshop-style session, where we can help them craft their message, and then set a date where we all come together to go to a common council meeting and have them advocate for funding. So that's on the twenty-seventh. You'll get an invite.
Yes, let's get moving. Twenty-seventh of February, yes. Any others? I happened to come by, go by the library this weekend, and it was Take Your Child to the Library Day. I took my child to the library all the time, but it was funny, because I walked in, I was like.
Of course, you were there earlier.
Yes, he was there when I got there.
We ran into each other on the way out.
Yes, Nick and I both.
We did have quite a few new families.
Oh, my gosh, there was a lot.
Come in.
It's amazing.
Which is good. I hope we come back, you know, they got, but, however, we did offer a prize to children who got a brand-new library card, and I gave away several that day, so I know there are some families who got their children's library cards, you know, before they get into school and come on a field trip, so.
Please don't forget the library preschool team wherever you are.
No, and can I just say that children's librarians have been singing Baby Shark for decades, and all of a sudden it gets co-opted YouTube, and it's a big, it's a big thing.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Decades, it's thousands of decades.
All right, so consent agenda, I believe there are some items that were, would like to be removed, can you please list them for me?
E, J, and K for me.
C.
I feel like I'm calling bingo.
Bingo. Oh, sorry.
Okay. So we will take them in order. So C, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve personnel transactions.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I think we have to go into executive session. Is it possible to add it to the one we're having later?
We can.
Have an individual question?
Well, yes, if the question is regarding the position itself, no, but if the question is pertaining to anything other than that, yes. So we can add it to executive session. So can I have a motion to discuss an executive session?
Motion to discuss an executive session.
Are we going into executive session right now to discuss it?
We could, or we can't. You can't table it. We said we want to table one thing. So we want to.
It looks like we have to have an executive session later.
We do.
Do you want to go with that?
Yeah, we can hold it. We can hold it off.
We're going to hold it.
Motion to table until we go to executive session.
Fabulous. Seven second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect. D, is this one? Okay. Motion for D?
Motion to approve the plan specifications and professional cost estimates for small elementary school.
Okay. Second, anyone?
Second.
All right. Discussion?
I did not see anything in the packet. Usually, I mean, he's usually pretty detailed with what he wants us to approve.
Page nineteen. It's page nineteen.
It's just.
So.
This says plan specifications and professional cost estimates. There's no estimates. It's just saying we're using grant money.
Where is it? Hold on. Go ahead, Nick. Trying to get to it.
Through you to Mr. Moore. Is this just the next step in the approval process for the smalley construction process where we have to approve the different phases of construction?
Yes.
Okay, then I, okay, then I'm good. But usually you have something or there's something in the packet, and there just wasn't anything there, so I'm good.
Well, did you want to picture both playgrounds?
Okay, because I was going to say.
Specific playgrounds.
Yeah.
And that's the grant money we just took in?
No.
Not that.
This is a state-funded project. We get eighty percent reimbursement on the playground.
Okay.
Part of that process requires for that approval prior to us going for state review to get reimbursement.
Okay.
All those in favor signify. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Motion to approve bid waiver purchase order for cleaning, prepping floors, walls, ceilings for MET Academy.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? The academy we just talked about, yes.
Yes.
And, and I'm just going to say this once, and it really relates all three of the items that I pulled. It really would help the board. I understand that certain things go onto a consent agenda because they, you know, they've been, especially in certain cases like renewal of licenses, things like that where it's routine purchases. It really would help me as a board member be comfortable with things on consent if in the background purpose, if it mentions how many quotes were received, what were the quote amounts? Because I really do think that it's in the best financial interests.
Of the board.
Of the board and of the city for us to be at least getting more than one, more than one or two quotes. Or if it is a case where there's a certain circumstance, like there's a unique vendor, like sometimes with software license renewal, there's only one vendor. If there's a certain brand of instrument that we're trying to acquire because this is the exact thing that we want, I'm, I can understand that, but if it's in the background that we get with the board packet, it makes it much easier for us to understand why we're trying to go outside the bid process and do a bid waiver. Especially when we're talking about projects that are fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. So I, not against the project, I just really would appreciate if we get multiple quotes, just to make sure.
Where now I am Debbie Downer on the China. I feel like Debbie Downer on the twenty thousand dollars for the MET Academy when we don't have the funding going forward just yet. So Sandra, do you want to address that?
Sure. The prepping, other word, when we met with a lot of our manufacturers, some of our companies have made a commitment to donate the funds, and they wanted to know if the district was willing to donate some funds. In regards to the bid waiver, Ray received a quote, and I received a quote, and I can show you a picture of the gentleman that gave us a quote. His name is Steve. He did Richard's machine, who is here, so I have samples for you. I can show you their video. But he came in at a really great price that beat the other waiver, because he is a alum at New Britain. He graduated from New Britain High School. He loves what we're trying to do, and he came in and beat the other waiver.
The other waiver.
A bit, not a waiver.
No, the. So what?
Sorry. And I can show you what the work will, I'd like to show you Richard, so you can see what the work will be.
Any work that they do in that hallway is going to be beneficial, right? It would be an upgrade. I have no other, there's no, you can't be politically correct with that, because it's.
The quote is actually for two rooms, and I know I did, I put one room on that.
But it's for two.
And it's actually five thirty-five and five thirty-six. The floor, the walls, the ceiling, and he's painting, and part of his business, he's located in New Britain as well, which is a plus, is also painting like lockers, so he's going to paint our metal cabinets in the room, so everything flows nicely from five thirty-five to five thirty-six.
Yes, Mr. Mercer.
And just to that point, if in the background it had said, you know, we have received two bids, this was the low amount, that would have, that would have put my mind at rest with that.
Sure.
So just in the future, that's something that I've, you know, we've talked about.
Didn't.
Or not two bids, but two quotes.
I was just going to, that was my second question.
This isn't just normal. This isn't, this is actually their, the grinding of the floor, painting of the floor, so that it has that staining. They have to blast the ceiling and ensure that it doesn't go over the electrical work. They're going to tape around the windows so that where we have the, the power shrouds hanging and breaking speed more clearly, and they stipulate this kind of the nine months likely, but they're going to do all that work that is in manufacturing. It's not just the regular ceiling in.
So just, so just briefly, we are not going to be in violation of anyone else's contract by doing this. That's what she's asking.
Right, that's, that's.
We checked that ahead of time.
Okay.
Question?
Yeah, this is the, I saw the pricing on that sheet, it was an epoxy paint, which is a specialty. Not something I'm sure I haven't called my to do either. But to Nick's point too, I think they're moving forward. We should have that stuff included in the packet, because I think myself, I wouldn't accept or approve something of this nature without seeing the bids. I mean, you guys just great, great presentation, and I, I understand the, the scope of that work and why it is what it is, and the use of the outside contractors, so I can speak for that, but at the same time, I would have liked to see that on the vote, you know, more expensive, just for the transparency of the board.
Oh, sorry. It's only.
And then one last question.
This.
Hold on, hold on.
When will they start this? How long will it take? And how, how do they work on the kids?
Once everything's approved, the goal is that starting in, end of February, they can start taking the five thirty-five room, but the goal is April vacation, that they'll have the move finished. We have a lot of great summer programs that happen at the high school, so the, we're gearing towards, all right, for vacation. We have that Monday off, the next, the Monday after, allowing enough time for curing and the riggers to come in and bring all the machinery back into the rooms.
Miss Comick?
So the MET is in the budget for proposal for next year, correct? Or is this a million addition to what? No, the, the one million dollars that you, the presentation that you heard from the OK industry partner, we are doing fundraising efforts to, to get these dollars.
So separate from?
With the chamber, with the mayor's office, with, with Jason Howey. So the goal is that that doesn't hit our budget at all.
Correct.
So just this initial twenty thousand? And. Yes. Either way, it's going to be an upgrade to those classrooms and. Right. Maybe attract some students to take.
Yes.
And to speak to that, that room hasn't been touched since.
Probably since I went to school.
So.
It's like a living before time, dinosaurs.
That's what I was saying.
Since Mr. Slaver was band director or something.
Oh, come on. Not that old.
In high.
Not that old.
Sandra, can you just give the two dates of what we have coming up with Chamber and with Stanley Awards? Can you just let them know those dates, too?
Sure. So part of, after the evening, when I approve our kickoff, and our taking into the road begins February fourteenth, we go to the Rotary and present all industry partners there. Then on February twenty-second, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting, Tim Stewart and Jason Howey is hosting a kickoff at Stanley Black and Decker. They're expecting a hundred folks, industry partners to attend, with high expectations that we will come very close to the eight hundred thousand dollars. They have had informal commitments already, and they, the final commitment is ensuring that the board is on board and that we are ready to move with this program. So February fourteenth is at the Rotary luncheon, and then February twenty-second is the morning at Stanley Black and Decker. So.
And you'll all get invites.
Invites, correct. Expect about a hundred people, or more.
Cool. Okay. You know, I'm the, I'm the cheap one. Just a second.
I, I, I can guarantee the price we got was.
Yeah. It's not even about, it's not that the price is just what if you don't get the original, the, the rest of the funding. It's twenty thousand dollars.
Right, and you have a clean room.
That's coming from local funding.
For the machinery. So the teachers are there to work on the curriculum and to hand it. So the environment, that million is really about professional development and the equipment that goes inside the room.
Right, no, I'm saying the twenty thousand dollars to paint the room.
It's an investment in the program.
Is an investment in the program that we don't necessarily have the funding for yet. That's coming out of local funds. That's my whole point to that.
They're going to make it out.
Right. But kids are.
I'm, I'm confident.
But kids are taking classes in there anyway. Even if the new program.
Right, that's what I was.
Hand to, doesn't happen for whatever.
They have two beautiful new rooms.
They would have new rooms, and students would still be taking classes in them, and the summer program would still be happening in there as well.
Right.
And we would do it for somebody else who was having a program somewhere else probably.
Right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
If you go to richardcnc.com and scroll down on their webpage, who is here, it's the same company, if you walk into their building, you'll see what they're doing for them.
Ooh, fancy.
Thank you.
Where are we, C, D, J?
Motion to approve bid waiver for five new tympani.
Second.
Was that J?
Right, so this comes out of the.
A J.
Yeah. This comes out of the repair budget, right? I'm assuming that we feel confident we have enough money in there to repair. Mrs. Keller can hear, who can answer that question?
I can't hear, so.
Can you come, so we're looking at five J currently, the bid waiver for the five Adams ProGen Hammer Copper, Cooper Copper.
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 Tympani.
Tympani for New Britain High Music. I don't even know what those are, but.
The big, having the big.
Big drums.
Overdue, we need them so badly.
Right.
So my only.
Like, it's like.
My only question is, it's coming out of a repair budget, repair and then local funding. Local funding, I'm fine, because that's part of your budget, but the repair, you are confident that we have enough money to repair the existing equipment that we have?
Yes.
Okay.
There is, they have.
They have a repair.
Yes.
Right, they have a repair.
Yes.
These are, this is a purchase. It's not a repair, it's a purchase.
I gotcha.
So.
Right, but part of the, do you want to speak to that?
I, I was going to say, part of, part of typically how instrument repair and replacement is, is it usually comes out of the same.
Then it should probably be called repair and replace.
Yes, but.
I'm just saying.
But I'm saying that often.
We made an agreement with that.
Yes.
Statement that says that money is also used for the purchase of new instruments, and anything to keep the instrument safe is also part of the VHS one. So I did use half of the funding from local and half of the instrument repair account. But I, I'm very confident that we have enough to create the, to repair the instrument over the summer for the fall.
Gotcha.
Okay, perfect. I'm good. She can stay here too, because that's not staying.
Sure.
While I have you up, up here. Did we get multiple quotes for this, or did we just?
We did. We received two, and we went with the company we went with because they gave us a two thousand dollar discount.
Oh, we like two thousand.
Thank you.
Two thousand is good.
All right.
Thank you.
So in case we didn't, didn't hear Nick the first time, when we have multiple bids, if we could just list them on the bottom, how many we've received and that we most likely chose the cheapest one.
Or if we didn't.
Or if we didn't, why?
If we didn't, why?
Right. Okay. Next one's going to be you, so hold on one second. Okay. the summer for the fall.
Gotcha.
Okay. Perfect. I'm good. She can stay here too, because that's not staying.
Sure.
While I have you up here. Did we get multiple quotes for this, or did we just go with...
We received two. And we went with the company we went with because they gave us a $2,000 discount.
Well, we like $2,000.
Thank you.
$2,000 is good.
All right.
Thank you.
So, in case we didn't hear Nick the first time, when we have multiple bids, if we could just list them on the bottom, how many we've received and that we most likely chose the cheapest one.
Or if we didn't why.
Or if we didn't why, right.
We didn't why, right.
Okay. Next one's gonna be you, so hold on one second. Okay. Kay, is it her?
Yeah.
Is it her? No, but is that her? Video production courses? That's her?
It says Ryan Langer.
It does. It says Ryan.
So, Sandra is here.
All right.
She can speak to it too.
Okay.
I thought it was Yuliana, by the way.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect.
Motion to approve bid waiver purchase order for MBHS video production courses.
Second.
All right. Discussion.
Same as before.
Did we have multiple, and how many were there?
At the beginning of every year, as part of the vocation, Carly Perkins grant, we're allowed, it's a non-competitive grant to ensure that you are buying equipment and professional development for our teachers that are the new and rising coursework and keeping the technology and the career tech head program up to date. So, in the Perkins grant, it's written with a five-year continuous improvement plan, and this was done back in June over the summer, and the purchase orders in the state releasing their money was delayed. But part of the proposal in the Perkins grant and the five-year plan is to upscale the multimedia room, as well as the construction. There's another bid in there from Ryan Langer. That's another construction. So, two of those, two of the items in tonight's packet is about the Carly Perkins grant, what was approved by the state, what we, the submission we gave back in September, and now it's the items we're being purchased.
Excellent.
So, it's video equipment. For the construction, it's re-buying some of our CNC, and there's a specialty because it has a safety, it's a safety CNC, and you can watch a video, so it keeps our users safe if something, if the wood falls off. Keeps them, everybody in one piece.
Oh, we like that. Keeping people in one piece. Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Motion to approve purchase order for math support at Pulaski Middle School.
Second.
All right. Discussion.
I'm just, all right. So, maybe it's my lack of understanding, this contract was from October 2018, where they were already supposed to have visits in that time, but we're just now approving it. Is it, Kevin, can you speak to that? And I know Mike, this is with Pulaski. This is an ongoing partnership we've had with PREP, I believe.
Yes.
And what I know of it is that...
No, the dates go into 2019.
They do go into 2019, but the contract started in 2018. Go ahead.
It was signed through you to Mr. Kane.
If we have a contract, Mr. Kane? If we have a contract that is going over multiple years like this, is it common that the board in the future may have to approve money to pay for it because it can't all be paid? Like, the future payments, is that why this is coming forward to the board?
Why are we looking at it?
I believe they did come through a contract, not a motion to approve a grant. It's just the possibility. We appropriate the right portion.
So, grant money is by calendar year?
Yeah. Most grants end on June, or some grants end on March, sometimes on Thursday.
So, the question is why wasn't it signed before now?
I think this grant might be a 9/30 grant.
So, this is October 18?
Yeah. Some grants are different quarter.
Is it?
So, it's October 18?
So, I have a question. I think I might have the question and the answer. Is the reason why we are being presented with this now is because of the delay of the release of funds, and so we couldn't spend the money until we got the money? Is that why this is in front of us now? We're trying, just trying to figure out why it's now 2019 and we're getting it versus 2018 when they signed it, in October?
Yeah. I don't really have a good explanation.
Okay. So, I was just gonna say, and these people, they, so they've been fulfilling their contractual obligation even though they haven't been paid?
I don't know.
I think what happened was each school gets a portion of money, and Tricia helped me come along with it. And so, Pulaski had not used their portion, and so now they're trying to reap all the benefits of their portion. So, they're asking soon to come in to support their working out moving forward, because they're great dollars.
Okay. So, it's not in addition to...
No, it's not in addition. It's currently allocated for them, for them just using it.
Got it.
Right. He does say expenditure from money remaining from last year.
Right.
But, so are the, do these dates still, they scheduled for visits 10/17, 10/23, 11/9, 14?
I think those are all their dates, not just for them. That's my guess.
24.
Right. So, he hasn't used them up until now, is that what we're saying? So, the 24 is going to be expended from now until the end of the school year?
Well, according to the 18-2, it's for all of them.
Right. But were they here then? That's what we're trying to figure out, because it says the 10/17. So, have they been coming this whole time, and now we have to pay them? I mean, what happened?
Right. Like, I'm confused over that.
Ooh. Okay. The owing and the owing.
I think a little late. They understand, the school understood, it was reported before, and they were going out of that, and the contract approved.
So, they've made those visits in this contract, now we just have to pay them.
And here is why, because PREP has been working with this district for the last couple of years, and that was the assumption and understanding that they were still under the contract.
And carry forward. And they weren't.
Right.
So, they thought it was already approved.
Oh, so they...
I was gonna say, so to Nick's point, having a little bit more information in background and purpose and rationale might help.
Sorry, I'm not laughing.
Because we could just move things along a lot faster, because we read it and just go, oh, okay. Jack?
We do actually read our packets.
Right.
We really do.
This is only a test, the emergency broadcast system. Okay, sorry.
Just replay.
So...
They're giving us money, we're okay.
Right. If you're giving money, I'm good.
Right. If you're giving us money, we're happy. If you're spending money and it's not in a timely fashion, it's not...
Right. We better do it now.
All right. Okay. So, now that we got the background information, any other questions, comments, concerns, other than the timeliness of the...
Well, and the reiteration of, filling out the background and purpose and save us some time.
Right. Right. I trust that Superintendent Sarah will have a conversation with those parties involved in filling out this paperwork future, because I feel heat coming from the side of my arm.
I thought I saw smoke coming out of her ears.
I think there might be. All right. So, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
We're done?
That's, we're done with the consent agenda. We are not done.
No.
We exclude the rest of the consent agenda.
Anything that's not taken off is considered approved on a consent agenda. Okay. New business set up.
Motion to...
I'm gonna go in a different order.
Yeah, okay.
So, just you have the motion.
Okay, never mind.
No, no, because we were talking about it earlier, so it's just easier.
We'll address session to the end.
Yes. That's exactly what we're doing.
That's exactly, that's what she's doing.
Oh.
Yeah. You really wanna do it right now.
She really wants to do, oh, hi, question. She really wants to do the appointment, because of course, we're sitting in the process.
Can we take the other gentleman?
Sure. Perfect. Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to address A, I, and five, what was that, five personnel transactions, five C, four C.
Four C.
Four C, and...
Five A.
H. Five, yes. So, four C, five A, H, and I.
Motion.
Second.
This... Oh, okay. So, we are gonna take a brief recess for five minutes, so we can do the executive session first then, because she just got her emergency call. So, that will include Superintendent Sarah, Dr. Tucker, and...
Mr. Kane.
Mr. Kane, and then also the, once the person for the administrative appointment is notified to come back, it will include that as well. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? One of my parents just died.
Okay. Motion to approve a contract between the Board of Education and, oh, sorry.
Administrative appointment.
Administrative point. Bye. Sorry. Out of order.
Jesus.
Mentally out of order, Don.
I would entertain a motion to approve the administrative appointment as coordinator.
Second.
Okay.
E.V. D. Simone.
Yes. You don't have to either. Okay. Of E.V. D. Simone, but I wanted to say her.
May.
Thank you. I apologize. Evelyn E.V. D. Simone. Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Certified personnel, Evelyn E. Simone, District Coordinator of Special Education and People Services, effective on or about March 5th, 2019, Master's plus 60 certification, intermediate administration and supervision, speech and later pathologist, positions at 148 to 7, step one, new position with local funding. Questions?
Just to put your mind at ease, we were back there discussing you this entire... There were other matters being discussed.
You were one of several things on the list.
Yours was asked.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Please come up and accept the congratulations on board.
Welcome to...
Motion to approve item 4C, personnel transactions.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Motion to approve bid waiver and purchase order for the installation of new playground equipment at North End Elementary.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Does anyone want to go like this?
Well, I'm just excited, because I went to North End, and they really, they don't have any. We used to have a little area that we could play, and that was it. So, I'm excited.
I'd love to see pictures, mockups or something. I looked, I didn't see, maybe on Live, Mr. Tucker. Oh, there we go. Sorry. On Live, I scroll. Go.
Again, just in the future with quotes, if we can get the full history, et cetera, et cetera.
That's all. Annoying. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And let them dance. All right. Next.
Motion to approve new position request for high school welcome facilitator.
Second.
Welcome facilitator? Like, welcome center. Welcome center. We have a welcome center?
We've been talking about this one for...
Yeah, we've been talking about it.
Quite a second.
Still playing my...
Okay. Because I don't recall why it came off.
So, the, I wanted to ask before I did...
As part of the Commissioners Network last year, one of the roles we didn't ask, had a welcome center, is to help somebody, help families that are not familiar with the school or be like a transition at a high school level. We first presented it as two-part-time position, had a lot of trouble filling two-part-time, and tonight we decided to make that one full-time, rather than two-part-time positions. It started on the Commissioners' current, last year, and then the continuation of it as two areas.
The term-long position.
Term-long position.
Just as a point of information, later on in the agenda, we do have item F, which is the job description, which has been revised both to reflect the term-long position and the longer hours, as well as the pay rate of 2404 per hour.
Because it was originally 16 times two.
Right.
So, instead of 16, was before we did the increase for the favored resource center facilitators two years ago. So, it started two years ago, and it has been very difficult to fill up that role, and the importance of that role at the high school level, which transitioning to nine and 12 into either career or college or career, so full-time.
This is Commissioners...
Commissioners and whites.
It started as a Commissioner, yes.
Non-union, right?
It is a non-union position.
Right. So, who used it?
If you use the money, you lose the position, but Commissioners Network has been kind to us thus far. Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve new position request for one social worker at New Bern High School.
Second.
Discussion. We need a new social worker.
Say we need a new social worker.
How many do we currently have? This will bring us up to how many?
I'm sorry, I was looking back towards...
Mr. Spoh, do you know how many social workers that will bring us up to?
At New Bern High School.
Sorry.
I wanted to say it's roughly around six, if I can count in my head, for social workers.
But this particular position is coming through the SBPT grant that requires, with the funds, to have a dedicated social worker and a dedicated nurse.
Dedicated social worker to...
For the, supporting the parent and parent team.
Thank you. Sorry. I heard it, but I was like, okay. I was thinking about the ratio of social worker and a student, but that's a specific population, so we'll not increase the... Okay. Yes.
Just a clarification. I know that the grant requires us to hire a point five social worker. Are we hiring a full-time just so we can more easily fill that position? Or is there a need at the high school for a caseload?
There is a need, and also, our parent and parent teams are located and more in place. They're all selling three different buildings potentially, so our nurse is also spread out into another building.
Thank you.
So, would the work would be split between non-pregnantines, or would it just only be solely pregnantines? If they're saying it's full.
At the high school, it would be solely, and then companion, and maybe a different population of students as well.
Patress.
Right.
Similar to our school-based conversion, 15, 15, 14.
Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Motion to approve new personal request for a pair educator at Holmes Elementary School.
Second.
Discussion. Questions?
I should know we need pairers.
Right. It's cattle.
It's a DPT decision. Yeah. There's a DPT.
It's for failure. A requirement, I almost.
Correct.
Yes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Revised description.
Yes. Motion to approve revised job description for the high school welcome facilitator.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. New policy.
Motion to postpone the approval of policy 5144.1, use of fiscal force restraint, exclusion and exclusionary retirement, to our next meeting.
First, second.
First, second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? H.
Motion to approve a contract between the Board of Education and Kevin Kane as Chief Financial Officer.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Surprise.
I was like, what? I was like...
Motion to approve a contract between...
Oh, you're...
They're two separate.
No, no, yeah.
Motion to approve a contract between the Board of Education and Jeff Prokop as Chief Information Officer.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Sorry. Motion to add an item to an agenda. I believe there is a late item in our packet, and it was a bid waiver purchase order for rule of Microsoft equipment. Motion to add that to our agenda.
Second.
That was on consensus. That was on consent, the Microsoft.
Consent, Microsoft something, something.
Was the Microsoft on consent?
Yes.
Okay. My apologies, then I saw. I'm gonna coffee.
Motion to add, okay, yeah, we have to vote.
No.
Motion to add, we, to reexamine the date of our committee meetings for personnel and for finance. Because the items that are coming in are coming in so late that we're not having meetings, but then they're coming at the end of the month, and then we're slammed with all this stuff. So, we have our meeting the last, those committee meetings, the last, the fourth Monday, then we would have the evaluation. So, but I have to, I'm motioning to add it, so I need to add it first.
Second.
Thank you.
Got it.
Now we can discuss it. So, that was the reason. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed? So...
Actually, I'm opposed to add this.
So we are looking at adding, we're changing it to the fourth Monday because what we are finding is the information that is due so that we can discuss and review the committees is not coming in in time for the meeting date we currently have. So if we put it on the fourth Monday of the month, we will then have adequate time to get the information.
We have the whole month to collect the...
To collect the information, view the information and then have it for the next board meeting